Twenty twenty four Planning Commission to order at seven P M. And we'll do the roll call.
Lance Ferraro, Eagle's Nest Road.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street.
Eric Power, Staff Planner.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion on favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes from the previous meeting of April tenth, twenty twenty four.
Move to approve the minutes of the previous meeting of April tenth, twenty twenty four.
I saw one change on page three, under the motion. It said motion carried four to one, and my vote wasn't recorded.
Oh, okay.
I'll withdraw that motion and make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting as amended by Commissioner Cody's comments.
Discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Public comment. Anyone wishing to speak right now on a non-agenda item can come forward or wait until the agenda item comes up and then speak then. Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move on to six A, new business special use permit, public hearing request, propose short-term rental land use to be located on a property located within the urban residential zoning district. Address is twenty-six fifty-two Moran Street in Marquette. Applicant is Heather Holmstrom, twenty-six fifty-two Moran Street in Marquette.
Yep.
Okay.
So staff has received a complete application for a special use permit for a short-term rental use at twenty-six fifty-two Moran Street. Application shown here, also included in your packet. Blue star denotes the location, is actually, probably see the backyard from here, right around the corner. One property removed from the one we are sitting on currently. This is just to schedule the public hearing, so we won't get into too much detail. There's a survey mortgage report included in your packet, as well as the Market County G I S fetch report. As I said, it is a complete application as far as staff is concerned, and we would recommend scheduling a public hearing for Wednesday, May twenty-second at seven P M.
I'm here too, if you have any questions. I'm Heather.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
What was the recommendation of the date for the public hearing?
May twenty-second. Which is a regular public, or regular Planning Commission meeting.
I make a motion to grant the request for a public hearing for the special use permit as described in six A of the agenda, and the public hearing would be scheduled for May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
More discussion. When I drove by there, I didn't notice if you had, Heather, I didn't notice if you had any numbers on the house, the address on the house. I didn't see any.
On the mailbox.
Okay, when you ask for this, you have to have the numbers on the house as well. Just for when this comes up next time. Okay?
That goes for anybody here that lives in Market Township, by the way. It's helpful for the fire department, emergency services, should they unfortunately be there. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May twenty-second. Okay. Moving on to six B, new business zoning map amendment, public hearing zero-four-two-four-two-four dash one, propose zoning map amendment to change partial tax I D number five-two-zero-eight-zero-one-eight-zero-one-six-zero-zero from rural residential to development district. Subject parcel is located at four-twenty Brickyard Road. And the applicant is Penn Inc., eight ninety-two County Road four eighty in Marquette. Jason or Eric?
Sure. So as a note, this item was actually heard on March thirteenth and approved by the Planning Commission. However, there was a glitch in our process to ensure due process. The ad was not placed in the Mining Journal as requested. Staffing changes there, and there was just a slight hiccup, so we apologize for that, and as a result of that, and to ensure transparency in the things that we conduct here in the township, we are reholding this public hearing this evening. As noted, we have received a complete zoning map amendment application. None of that has changed. Not sure why that's showing up like that, but that's not cool. Mister Taylor is here representing Penn Inc. He provided his reasoning, why he wanted to rezone the property. This project was applied for in two thousand seventeen and denied based on a couple of factors. Two, there was really not an imminent interest in the property from a commercial standpoint that was expressed by Mister Taylor, and the master plan at that time, the future land use map, did not reflect the property was a development district. As a result of our last process and the public input that was provided, the Planning Commission and Township Board supported that the future land use map be adjusted, not only on that parcel, but a couple of parcels in the community to adjust the future land use map, and that was one of them. Typically, when the Planning Commission looks at a zoning map amendment, the first thing they look at is the future land use map. Do those two things jive? And in this case, they do now. However, there are a number of other requirements and things that the Planning Commission looked at when considering a map adjustment. So you can see, this is the current zoning map, okay? So you have Orange is Development District, which is designed to be a buffer between the more commercial area and the development district. This is rural residential. And you can see that Development District zoning abuts this property. And in doing a little bit of research, Brickyard Road is actually a McNiff Road, so this is easement. The road commission does not have a deed for this portion of right-of-way. It's an easement over the property. So if the road wasn't there, these two properties would meet in the middle of the right-of-way. So I know that there was some discussion about spot zoning the last meeting, which I don't believe is accurate or relevant in this case. There is media Development District adjacent to it. So this is the, our existing future land use map as it sits now. You can see that where the star is, that parcel was adjusted as a result of the last master planning process, as were some properties north of Rupton Road, which are mostly residential in nature, but the idea, over time and through attrition, would be to convert those to commercial if they were so desired.
Jason, before you, I should have got you before you sat down, where, if you could show just with your finger or outline where this particular parcel that we're talking about tonight? Oh, right there. Okay, I see. I missed that. Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Yep. This slide shows the survey work that was done on the site and a conveyance of Mister Taylor to, I believe it would be Lindberg, for the relocation and bolstering of the street. And along with that, there was reduction, obviously, in the developable portion of the property, which sits at over two acres, I believe. So these are items that the Planning Commission looks at when they're proposed, or when they're considering a rezoning. A number of things are listed here, so you can read through those if you like. I know these were probably also shared at the last meeting, too. So if I go back, then I'll settle on this image, I guess, for our discussion, but that's what staff has to report. Those are the findings of fact, essentially, and there is correspondence that we have received, and we can read those into the record at any time that you see fit.
I have a couple of questions, Jason, please. So I'm looking, in addition to your explanation, which is very clear, I'm looking at the letter of March thirteenth of twenty twenty-four from Michael Springer, who previously was the chair of this commission and was on the Planning Commission for quite a while, and he supports the zoning amendment, and he mentions that this was, the future land use map was changed. Now, you mentioned it as being changed as when we went through that process. What exactly was that? Was that the master plan, the last master plan process?
Correct. Yep, we held a number, or I think it was a few different public input sessions. People could come in, and we had maps out, sticky notes and suggestions, things of that nature.
And so as part of, as part of that process, then Mister Springer refers to a subcommittee was formed to review the future land map for properties, et cetera, et cetera. And that subcommittee was a subcommittee of this Planning Commission?
Yes, I believe it was.
Uh-huh, and was it made up of members of the Planning Commission?
I believe it was, yeah.
Okay. And then was that report then given to the Planning Commission prior to the adoption of the, our current master plan?
I believe, yes. It was all kind of
Okay.
Subcommittee came back to the Planning Commission and provided their input.
And being relatively new on this commission, I wasn't here for the master plan process last time, so after all, the subcommittees make the report and everything, then does this body, this Planning Commission, vote whether to recommend the adoption of the master plan, including the future land use map? Okay, and, and so I take it that the Planning Commission as a whole voted to approve that. Is that correct?
That's correct, and as did the Township Board through a resolution of concurrence.
Okay, so it had to go from this body to the Township Board. The Township Board independently looked at everything and decided that, yes, we're going to approve this, right?
They were in agreement with the Planning Commission.
Okay. So in terms of the import of the master plan, that's an official document of the township, is that correct? The future ma, future land use plan, map?
In what capacity?
I mean, where is that? If I wanted to find the future land use map, where would I look? I wouldn't look in, would I look in our zoning ordinance, or would I look at our master plan?
It's in your master plan.
Okay, so that's an official document of this township?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess I'm wondering, why are we re? I understand, I understand. I get it. This has already been determined, but he had, the petitioner has to come here and ask for the rezoning, so the zoning map is different than the future land use map?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's why, even though officially this land is recommended for the purpose Mister Taylor wants, it's not official yet because the zoning map hasn't caught up with the future land use map?
Yes, I guess to explain that to the public as well. So the future land use map is a, it's just that, a future land use map, and if a zoning map amendment is requested, so there's, you know, the township can request a rezoning, a landowner can request a rezoning, and it works the same whether it's a zoning text amendment or a zoning map amendment. There is a public hearing held, neighbors within three hundred feet of the subject property are notified, and a public hearing occurs.
So we're not
But the
Go ahead.
Let me finish.
Sorry.
So you are only making, like, even at the March thirteenth meeting, we would take this information forwarded to the county Planning Commission for their review. And the only body, then, when it comes back to us after the county Planning Commission's review, the only body that can amend the map or the zoning ordinance is the Township Board.
Right, okay. But as far as our, the purpose of our meeting here tonight, it's only to take an action to put into effect
Yeah.
the recommendation made by this body back when the master plan was done, correct?
Well, it's actually, I would say more than that. It's to either approve or deny, and the approval would be a recommendation, recommendation to the board to amend the map.
Right, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, we're not here to sit in judgment as to whether or not this commission, back in the time of the Planning Commission, when was the master plan finalized?
I think twenty twenty.
Okay, so we're not here to, to pass on whether or not this body and the township made a mistake back in twenty twenty when they approved this land use as a future land use, correct? We're not here to decide that.
I guess you can have your opinions on those things.
Okay.
But, you know, the future land use map is the current
Yeah, okay.
Future land use map.
Okay, we're just here
And it's going to change, maybe, it usually only changes in small increments, right? A landowner has interest from an outside entity, and, you know, we have some planning meetings that occur throughout the master planning process, which will happen again this year, as I've expressed to some of the Wiesen family, and there'll be an opportunity, and this time, I'd really like to, I guess, gather people from certain areas of the, of the community. You know, Forestville, I think this area is a good area to look at, certainly Trowbridge Park. You know, there's, there's areas in the community that are certainly under more development pressure than other areas.
Okay, all right. And we're here just because there's been a request now to implement, and put into effect, a land use that was recommended already by this body?
Correct, except that it takes a map amendment, which the Township Board is the only body
I got you, okay, thank you. Thank you for that, thank you.
If you'd like, you could read those into the record now, Jason.
Sure. First letter is from Gail and Kenneth Youngkery from four seventy-five Brickyard Road. It was recently brought to our attention of proposed zoning changes from residential to commercial in our neighborhood. We live at four seventy-five Brickyard Road and would be affected tremendously by these proposed changes. We purchased our property twenty-plus years ago and have enjoyed the quiet and privacy. Do not need more traffic going up and down our road, traffic at the intersection of our road and the west road coming from Meyer. We already take our lives in our own hands, leaving our road or returning from people not stopping at the stop sign from Meyer. Two roundabouts close to each other also causes a problem with people not obeying the speed limit at the traffic during, and the traffic rushes at certain times of the day. Our backyard and the west of us would greatly affect us. We already can see the lights from the Ford Subaru dealerships on U S forty-one. We do not want to see more lights in our backyard. There are plenty of vacant commercial buildings in the township that could be used, and we don't need more built. I remember several years ago, I contacted you in regards to a broker calling us, inquiring about our property before Meyer was built, and you said that the handwriting is on the wall as to our residential property being changed to commercial. We are opposed to these proposed zoning changes, and we don't believe that the handwriting needs to be on the wall. Thank you, Gail and Kenneth Youngkery. I can respond to that by saying that I went back and looked at your property, and on the future land use map, it is classified as Development District. So if my words were misconstrued, I apologize, but the future land use map, where you purchased property, currently indicates Development District as a future land use map. It doesn't mean it's rezoned, it just means that in the future, it could potentially become that. The next one is from Mister Tim Glover. Didn't give the address, but if you recall, my wife and I, Laura, or my wife Laura and I recently purchased property on the south side of Brickyard Road, the map below, with the intention of building a family home, so we are interesting, we're interested in escaping the city of Marquette and enjoy a more rural residential lifestyle in our future retirement. It has come to our attention that they are proposing a zone change to the property located at four-twenty Brickyard, from residential to commercial. Both Laura and I stand firmly in our opposition to such change. We have witnessed a significant increase in noise, traffic, and light pollution, and any additional commercial development would magnify an already looming issue. There is already a shortage of affordable housing in Market County. Taking one more property off the market and turning it over to a commercial developer takes away the magic found in a rural residential neighborhood. In addition, in reviewing the master plan, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, we are also opposed to any future zoning changes to the south side of Brickyard Road that would pave the way for additional commercial development. I appreciate your time and consideration on this matter. Comes from Mister Drew Wiesen, from four thirty Brickyard Road. Dear Planning Commission, we are writing to oppose the change, zoning change at four twenty Brickyard Road. After reading through your master plan, we found some, we found numerous reasons and contradictions to its stated objectives, showing that this application shouldn't be approved. The first item on our list is page fifty-one, section six point one. It was generated for public comment and participation. There are twelve bullet points on this list. Eleven of them benefit the community as a whole, while one of them, rezone four twenty Brickyard, benefits a single landowner is viewed by us as a detriment to the adjacent property. As one of the other bullet points to improve storm water management, one of the other bullet points is to improve storm water management, adding improved surfaces directly adjacent to Brickyard Creek is not only an improve, not only an improvement, I would say it's not an improvement, it conflicts with many of the objectives referenced below. The second portion of the master plan that needs to be considered, excuse me, is section seven point two, goals, objectives. Objective one, at least four goals that pertain to water, storm water protection, and reduction of impermeable surfaces. D D allows for parking lots, and since these will be directly adjacent to Brickyard Creek, we all know where the snow will be pushed and run off directly. In objective two, it recommends implementing the Marquette Township Transportation Plan. Near the front of this plan, it references, references survey where the township's congestion management was ranked last in satisfaction, and seventy-six percent of respondents said a reduction of congestion was somewhat very important to them. Adding driveways and commercial traffic to this already overused intersection will compound these problems. Objective five point eight and five point nine in economic development talks about blank reduction, Westwood Mall being a prime example, and the promoting development in the business park. Adding commercial, commercial here doesn't do either one of those things. Five point three says to limit or reduce driveways to minimize congestion, see above in objective two. Five point one four, minimize conflicts, conflicts between incompatible land use. The so-called buffer of the D D doesn't protect residential from commercial better than current residential. Rezoning this, in this manner creates conflict. Objective six point three, improve and conserve sound but aging houses. The house needs a paint job and somewhat overdue maintenance, but otherwise is very sound. We toured this house when it was listed last, or last, I'm sorry, we toured this house when it was last listed and put an offer in with the intention of repairing the house and continuing to rent it out. Six point eight, ensure safety and quality neighborhoods while preserving the rural character of the township. It's highlighted in the township's sesquicentennial publication. This neighborhood is the site of the wealth farm and the oldest house in the township. How would a business here ensure the goals of six point eight? Objective six point nine, encourage housing opportunities for all ages and income, all income and age groups. Enough said. In our opinion, there are plenty of reasons listed in the master plan and associated documents that stack against this application. The same master plan has the entire south side of Brickyard Road, including three other occupied residents listed as D D. This adds more questions to the quality of the document and why this proposed zoning was added to this version of the master plan. In summation, this proposal doesn't add value for us or the township, only the applicant or property owner. It doesn't align with many of the goals in our master plan. Please vote no on this sincerely Dave, or excuse me, sincerely Drew, Brandy, Vivian, and Miles Wiesen, four thirty Brickyard Road. And I will add that I also received a phone call from Mister Daniel Cook, didn't provide his address, but I believe he's on Brickyard Road, and basically provided comments that he was not for the zoning text, or zoning map.
And Mister Taylor is here, if you have any other questions before we open the public hearing, or if there's anything you'd like to add before we open it, you can do so now.
Robert Taylor, eight ninety-two County Road four eighty, Marquette, Michigan. This kind of feels redundant, doesn't it? I've already been here, was already approved by this commission to forward it on to the next process, and unfortunately, someone made a mistake, whether it's the Township or the Mining Journal. Regardless, I think this is slightly unfair. That's all I'm going to say for right now. I'd like to reserve a comment for any questions later.
Any questions for Mister Taylor, always here?
Well, yes, I do. This is, this is not the public hearing portion.
No.
Okay, fine, then, aye. Yeah, Jason referred in his introduction of this about some deal that you made with Lindberg was regarding the creek? What was it?
That was a long time ago. When, when we expanded the road to go into Lowe's and Meyer's, the, he wouldn't let us just put a culvert in, so we had to basically build a box culvert bridge.
Oh, okay.
In order to do that, we had to relocate the stream, so I sold him the property down below to relocate the stream.
Okay, and that was all done with proper permitting?
Many, many years ago, yes.
Eagle was involved and so forth? Okay. That's all I had, thanks.
Anything else?
I'll read out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing at seven twenty-eight. Anyone wishing to speak can come forward at this time.
Lori Wiesen, four thirty-two Brickyard Road. You know my feelings on this rezoning application. It is going to be detrimental to our neighborhood. The character of our neighborhood has been such that over the last twenty years that we've been there, the onslaught of development has just continually brought us before this fine group of people, as well as the Township Board. The danger at the intersection is real, and there's glass all over the intersection right now. The addition of another commercial enterprise, even if it was a funeral, you know, it's, it's going to add a driveway and some additional traffic. And I think that whoever planned that whole thing out with the driveway into Meyer, the coming off the roundabout, going up to Meyer, coming into Brickyard, oh, maybe I'm going to go over to Lowe's, it's just a real cluster, and I think everybody knows that. I think it would be foolhardy to have another commercial enterprise at that corner. I have my selfish reasons for not wanting it, but that really is the more compelling issue.
Thank you.
Deloitte Kuzdo, four fifty Brickyard Road, and I'm adjacent on the west side of this property. And I don't know how much you people travel. And I don't know how much you people travel to Lowe's, T A Maxx, or to Meyer's. But I would think that 20 to 25% of the people that come from Meyer's and Lowe's out of Brickyard onto Brickyard Road, them are private roads. Everything north and east of Brickyard Road. Brickyard Road comes out the highway, you makes a 98 degree corner and turns and goes west. That is Brickyard Road. All the streets to the north are all private owned by Lindberghs. And I don't know how you people can put private roads coming onto a county road, put a stop sign, and then also put a stop sign on the county road to stop us from going on, on a county road. Now, that's just like going, if your driveway comes out to a county road, put a stop sign on each side of your driveway for the people coming down the county road so you can get out of your driveway. And that's just about what it's come to right now. I was coming here and a guy was coming 30, I would say 30 to 35 miles an hour from Meyer's, and went right through the stop sign. Never even thought it was there. He just drove right through in front of me. And that happens one out of every 10 to 15 times that you go out of your, out of Brickyard Road onto the road to the by, or to the roundabout. And they don't seem to care about that stop sign at all over there. So we put another driveway in there, and it's going to be right by there because the creek is right below it. So it's going to come out right at that stop sign. Now, I don't know how you people think about this, and if you's ever went there and checked it for a while, you would see what we're putting up with. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll make a quick comment. Drew Wiesen, 430 Brickyard. I guess two, one for Dennis is, I, as my lengthy email probably showed you, I read through the master doc, master plan quite a bit. And in the beginning, Dennis, it does say that that document is a guideline. It's not anything you have to follow and, you know, just look through current circumstances and make your decision. And the other comment is adjacent, he said that some of the Brookton Road residents were put in the DD and perhaps will lose them in the future through attrition. I, I don't know how I feel about that, as I mean that the residents are going to leave the township because their houses are converted to commercial. I just hope that, again, that there's some colors written on a map for the master plan and, and you consider what's happening right now versus what they thought was best five years ago.
Thank you.
I also just have one quick comment. Danny Gerson, 2043 Orchard, Marquette Township. I know that you, you talk about a bad intersection and somebody's taking their life in their own hands all the time. I've been with fire rescue for 45 years now, and I don't think to my knowledge, and I, I'm not going to be sworn to this, that there's ever been a personal injury accident at that intersection. Fender benders, yes, but they're not taking their life into their own hands. And therefore, I don't see where there's a huge problem, and if, if there's, if they're not stopping for the stop sign, then is all we have to do is get our sheriff department, which we pay through the, through the township, to sit there and ticket these people that are going through that stop sign.
They're there repeatedly. I see no tickets ever written. I don't know, they're just there for, as a presence apparently.
Do you see them stop people?
No.
Do they blow through the stop sign and, and they just sit there?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'm sorry, but I don't think that's happening.
We'll come to you there.
Take a video then.
Okay, let, would you just address us, please?
Show us, show us a video and, and we'll take care of it. Thank you.
We have to keep an eye out for the car not stopping or we would get hurt badly. We have to slam on our.
I'll respond to his question about, there's only been, nobody been bodily hurt there. We don't know that. But if that car is going 30 miles an hour coming through that stop sign or 25 miles an hour, and he hits the broadside in the door, do you think somebody's going to get hurt? I stopped to let him go. Now, that ain't, this isn't the first time it's happened. It's happened 50 to 75 times in the last couple of years. This isn't something that just happens once in a while. And there's always glass, taillight lenses, headlight lenses on the ground there. So this is what we have to look forward to. Thank you.
Okay, quickly, Jeff Cornhart, CUP 40, Brickyard Road. I, I guess I own the oldest house on the block. But as far as the traffic goes, originally, there was no stop sign there at all, and people just drove through there. I know retired police officer, maybe most people out there know. Anyway, so they do blow that stop sign. I've had people chase me down to my house screaming at me because I have the right of way, because I'm not making a left turn, I'm just following the road, just curves to the left. And they are either running the stop sign, or they stop and then start to go, and I have the right of way. But I've had several people chase me down swearing at me. And, you know, it's annoying. That's, that's my thing. And I don't, I obviously disagree with another commercial building or, you know, in that neighborhood. We've lived there 10 years, so that's all.
Anyone else? Okay, see no one else, we'll close the public hearing at 7:37. And questions, comments, motions?
I have a question for Jason. Jason, assuming that this would be approved, the zoning amendment will be approved, and that Mr. Taylor has a, some business that wants to come in there and build something, that business would have to submit some type of a plan to us, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we would be able to review that plan in terms of whether the layout was appropriate in terms of traffic, in terms of whether or not the stormwater drainage was appropriate, whether or not there was required buffer fences to shield it from other areas? All that would have to take place, is that correct?
As well as a traffic study potentially, depending upon the type of business. And I did reach out to the road commission expressing some concern. And although they indicated that they didn't have any immediate improvements planned for the area, they did say, you know, if, if a proposal comes in and the property was rezoned, then they would review any proposed driveway the same way they would any other commercial entity. This area also falls within 1,000 feet of the US 41 corridor. And as such, we have access management principles, which is a fancy term for, believe it or not, best management practices with regard to driveways. Now, Brickyard Road has been there for some time, and the driveway, the commercial drive that's there that goes to the north in Meyer has been there relatively short. So there is the potential that a developer may have to make accommodations for their development and potentially some improvement, you know, to the, to the access itself. But the, the road commission has to allow reasonable access to the site. I mean, we've had many dances. We wanted to push the Honda Toyota dealership driveway further west because of access management principles. But they were adamant that it would have messed up their site flow. And of course, we acquired some property for the roundabout. We acquired some property for the pathway. Lots of things that happened in the background to try to make these projects better. But in that case, it wasn't necessarily a win-win, and you see the effects of that with people trying to enter that site. Thankfully, there's another driveway on the other side in that particular development. But, yeah, we try to do the best we can with, with proposals that come through. And there are, you know, buffer yard requirements. I noticed that the development is about 500 feet from any residence. There is natural buffer on the west side of the property that we would look to maintain should any kind of development go in there. But I don't want to get ahead of ourselves. This is
Right.
still a discussion, but we have looked at those things and, and we would scrutinize any development the way that we normally would.
And another question, DD is a multi-use zoning district, right? So you have residential, you have some types of commercial that are less intense.
Right, you're not going to see any industrial, light industrial, any of that. There's some commercial land uses that are available. However, if they are adjacent to residential zoning and/or residential land use, there would be another public hearing involved. And additional scrutiny and additional comments or suggestions from the public could be implemented.
And has anything changed, from your perspective as a zoning administrator and a community planner, has anything changed in this area in the intervening period between the time this commission and the township approved the future land use map and today that would, in your professional opinion, cause you to think that the future land use map was improperly drawn to include this as DD?
Well, what you see along the corridor is strip or ribbon development, right? Everybody that comes into the community that wants to develop a business wants to be within pretty close proximity of the highway because that's where the traffic's at. The future land use map, to my knowledge, on the south side of Brickyard and north of US 41 hasn't changed in a long time. It's actually been that way for quite some time. The only adjustment that was made in the last iteration of the future land use map was this piece of property. And so it kind of aligns with the property to the south as far as a, a border. I really don't see it going too much further west than this, especially not along Brickyard Road unless there was, you know, a development along the south side of Brickyard Road and to the north of US 41, albeit there's a lot of wetland in the area, there's some topo challenges in that area. And I think that's why you've seen some of these properties that are for sale a little bit further west than the residences that we have on the south side of Brickyard Road. But a good indicator of why those properties are still available, I think that they're, from a land use development standpoint, they're very challenging pieces of property to develop. But I do know that there were phone calls made and letters sent to some of the residents that are just west of the Meyer gas station at the time when they were planning this site out. And I believe that there were some, perhaps some offers made. I don't, I don't know, but obviously you see that the gas station landed where it landed, and there were no additional impacts to those neighbors at that time.
Thank you.
And just so you know, I was on the planning committee at the time when we did approve that, and we did spend quite a bit of time on it. And we did have public hearings, and we didn't have opposition from anyone at the time, from anyone coming to speak or any written comments or phone calls.
And, and so it would be also, when we're going to go through this master planning process in the next 12 months or so, we'll be considering what the future land use of many of the areas in the township should be, correct?
Yeah, I would say including this area in particular. You know, that line where the power line is, has historically been the western frontier of commercial development. And it's been that way for some time. In fact, the zoning map, you know, really reflects that. So, again, I don't see it growing to the west, but that changes with land ownership and, but, you know, you have the reasons here, I've been there for a long time. I see young Drew and his family there, you know, I don't see them maybe moving anywhere anytime soon. So I'm just saying that things change, and I've seen all different kinds of scenarios where, you know, a family member dies and kids inherit the property, but they don't want to pay taxes on it, so they want to sell it as quickly as they can and just get out of it. I mean, all those things that happen. I'm not saying that that's happening in, in anywhere along this road. I think we have, I think I counted 10 homes approximately west of this area, which are all zoned rural residential, and they're beautiful properties. So I hope it's, whatever happens, whether this gets approved or not, that we take into consideration the comments made tonight and, and work with the road commission perhaps to make some changes on enforcement or to that intersection as a configuration.
Jason, would you clarify for me on the letter that Mr. Wiesen wrote on the front page of the last paragraph where it says it's including three other occupied residence listed as DD, which those three are?
The master plan has the entire south side of Brickyard Road, including three other occupied residence listed as DD. On the future land use map, yes. So I've got a copy of the current master plan, and I can open up to the current future land use map. It was also provided by Mr. Taylor.
What is the process where Meyer is, the gas station?
Yeah, and that's been like that, Bethany, for, perhaps since I've been here, that's been 2011?
I see it, Jason. I, it's that Cook, Joseph and Alma property.
Yes, yeah. So, again, development district though, not general business, which throughout, you know, we have 2.7 miles of US 41 corridor that traverses our border from west to east. And the future land use map at this intersection and east is the only area where you have general business zoning. Anything west of this is proposed on the future land use map adjacent, these are only parcels typically abutting US 41. Those are only proposed to be development districts, so not the more intensive commercial district, for instance, the, the business park here is, is development district.
And for that matter, if somebody wanted to put in a commercial establishment on the first floor and condos on the third, fourth, fifth, and sixth floor along there, that would be okay in the development district, correct?
I think mixed use actually only is relegated to the general business district.
Okay, so in other words, any
One principal use in the development district.
Okay, so any residential, but it still could be residential along that?
It could.
Yeah, okay.
Which is the private road that Mr. Kuzno is referring to? Is Brickyard private? Which, when he said the private road?
No, he's referring to the commercial drive north of, well, you can see, you can see the historic nature of Brickyard Road, right? So this is a parcel of property. And everything, you know, this is a private piece of property, although it's a commercial driveway. In fact, when Meyer, if we want to back way up, when Meyer came in, we really wanted to extend the commercial driveway, which would have became a public road, to the northern boundary of Meyer. But there's a one acre parcel in their own line. the northern boundary of Meyer. But there's a one acre parcel in their own, by Mr. Sanderson, and you can see it. They developed around it. And he said no to selling to Meyer. Had that happened, we may very well have a bypass road along the up the sky property tying back into Wright Street, which is in, also in our master plan. That didn't occur. That happens sometimes. I think they offered Mr. Sanderson over market value. And because it's a vacant piece of property, you know, I think they offered him well over what the appraised value was. However, we were kind of baffled by that because I think it would have provided perhaps some proper access to some of the other properties up in that area that were residential in nature as well. Where right now, they have an access easement to get to the property, but they don't have the right to put in curb and gutter, asphalt, utilities, et cetera. So. Long story there, but it's like, again, it's not like we don't look at these things from a long range standpoint. Sometimes they don't work out the way that you want them to work out. Or anticipate that they'll work out.
Is that still open? The mic open yet or did you close?
It's closed.
He's the chairperson.
No, we closed the public hearing. Any more comments or questions, anyone? And again, this is just a recommendation to go to the county and then to the township board, and then they'll have the final say on this. So we aren't passing this. We're just recommending it. Anyone interested in the motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to recommend the zoning map amendment as discussed in item 6B of our agenda.
Is that the correct motion? What are you recommending?
Recommending that the zoning map amendment to change parcel ID number 520801801600 from rural residential zoning district to development, development district, zoning district pursuant to the, all the relevant portions of the Marquette Township ordinance and subject to all the other items listed in 6B, that that amendment recommended, does that amendment be adopted?
Any support for that?
All support.
All support? Okay. Discussion? And we also have any comments? All right. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with New Winslow. Jim Johnson's a yes.
Yes.
Dennis Ferraro is yes.
Okay, it's three to one.
Okay, so for those in the audience, we are going to be putting together a packet to go to the county. It'll have all your letters in it. It'll have all staff report. The county planning commission will review it. We're hoping to get this to them tomorrow because they meet on the first Wednesday of the month. They have 30 days to respond. Once we get that back, then it'll go to the township board. And I would suggest there's not a public hearing at the township board level. So anybody that's interested in this would want to pay attention to the township's website and their agendas for the township board. If any of you reach out to me, email, I'd be happy to provide the date that it's going to the board. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to 6C, Marquette Township Master Plan Update, RFP Summitt Award Recommendation.
Yes, we were fortunate to receive three proposals to update our master plan from, in my opinion, three very bona fide planning firms. One was Beckett and Rayder. They happened to be over budget for us, so I didn't include them in our packet here. The two qualifying proposals were from McKenna, which is a downstate firm. And, well, so is SEH. They're a downstate firm too, but they are also a national firm and they have over 900 employees. I don't know if you had a chance to read through the proposals, but my recommendation is to award the master plan contract, if you will, based on our Mishta grant that we received to SEH for a dollar amount, not to exceed 50,000. And some of the reasons, I guess, that I wanted to award this to SEH is just their staffing. They have a very strong team of varying engineers, wastewater, water, geotechnical, GIS. And I believe they have perhaps an understanding of some more complex issues that we may have going on. And I just felt that their proposal was obviously highly professional. Both of them were highly professional. However, the team that SEH offers to bring to the table is just a very strong team and can assist us, I think, in a positive way, in a meaningful way, moving forward.
I was concerned about, Jason, was everything I saw pretty much in both of those packets, they were all cities. And I think there's only one township in there that I noticed, which I was kind of disappointed in that, that they didn't have more experience in township planning instead of just cities. I think there's quite a bit of a difference.
Yeah, you're right. And that's a good point. However. I think being Marquette Township, being a charter township is very close to being a city with the amount of development that we have and the type of development that we have. But yeah, I agree. It's not. But we also didn't receive a proposal from, well, the one we did receive was was over budget. But, you know, when you look at some of the major heavy hitters as far as consultants go in the state of Michigan, a lot of them do work for the bigger cities and not so much for the townships because maybe perhaps the money's not there or whatever. And we wouldn't be able to afford either one of these, probably if it wasn't for the grant that we received through Mishta. Sure.
So their fee is the whole grant?
Yeah.
That's the dollars. And I thought we had discussed hoping to have some extra, to do some extra things. Will those extra things are maybe going to be built into their scope of work?
Yes.
Okay, so that's kind of important. And I did see that McKenna did do some smaller areas, Hammerburg Township, Village Master Plan. So Village is somewhat fine, equitable to the township, especially.
Yeah, Eric brought up a good point right now. With regard to SEH, they have, they call them towns, okay? In Wisconsin, townships are synonymous with towns. So they do have some experience working with those entities as well.
Yeah, that's right.
So I.
And they're aldermen in Wisconsin, not, not city council members or.
Aldermen.
Aldermen, yeah.
Yeah, interesting. So I do see that they have a proposed timeline.
Yep.
And they are starting in May.
Yeah, I expressed to both entities that we were pretty flexible. We've never been in this position before, to my knowledge, where we actually bring in a major consultant to assist us. Yes, we've had some local consultants over the past, but not, I guess, somebody as qualified as, you know, either one of these two.
And I did note that they're looking at a planning commission work sessions. I hope we're not thinking we're going to do those during planning commission meetings.
No, there will be some extra meetings. I'm hoping that you'll really engage in this process. It's a very important process. And as you see tonight, we do have some areas in the community that are challenging that, you know, we would like to work on or at least provide some good plans for.
It does say community survey, and we had talked a lot about that community survey even at the township board level. So hopefully we can integrate not only what we're needing to ask, but maybe something that would be beneficial to the township as a whole.
Yeah, some of their SEH's graphics and mapping really stood out to me. The way that they take information and present it, I thought was really important. So I'm hoping that you'll agree with me because this is kind of, you know, I perhaps didn't have to bring it to the planning commission and then bring it to the board, but for transparency purposes, wanted to make a recommendation to you and hope that you would support it. But it's really being comfortable with who we're going to work with. And I'm comfortable with, with the group that SEH has put together and excited at their abilities.
Jason, are you satisfied from your interactions with these people at SEH that you'll be able to control the timeline? In other words, if you think they're moving too fast, you can tell them to slow down?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, really only one of the two also just called and had a phone conversation with me about what we're looking for, what are some of our issues and opportunities. And that was a representative from SEH.
Yeah, in other words, it's not going to be like, okay, and done, right? They're going to go along with our pace, what we need.
Yes, sir.
I mean, what you, you direct them, right?
Well, I mean, they're going to, RFP suggested we'd like to be done hopefully by the end of the year, but if it extends into 2025, I don't think there's anything hurt by that.
Okay, thanks.
I believe so.
I would appreciate that because we're going to take it to the township board at their meeting on the first.
I'll make a motion to accept the RFP and SEH for the master plan update, drafting and adopting the master plan.
In an amount not to exceed.
50,000.
That's correct.
I'll second that.
Discussion? I think they're both good presentations and, you know, I guess I agree with you, Jason. Whoever you think you can work with better is going to help the township out the most. You know, you're going to know better than we will. So that's who you think? I agree.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay.
Unfinished business, none at this time. Correspondence, ZBBA meeting on Monday, April 29th, 2024, dimensional variance requests.
Yep. So there's a couple of dimensional variance requests, just in excess of what we allow for accessory structure size in those zoning districts. There's one for rural residential and there's one for urban residential. So nothing earth shattering like our last ZBBA meeting. This should be fairly straightforward. And then the draft road committee minutes were provided for you. I'll let, we were able to have a meeting with Roger Zappa, our legal counsel, last week. And I'll let Eric update you just briefly on what was discussed there, but he basically relayed.
Right, yeah, there's not really much to update as far as new information, but I did ask him, we had met office closes at 4:30 and we were in the conference room until about 5:15 talking. And so we, I had asked him several of those questions that had been brought up in this body before as far as some of those specific regulations, occupancy limits, limiting ownership to individuals and not allowing business entities to, et cetera, et cetera. So some of those specific regulations, I did ask him specifically about those and he said he'd look into them. So that's basically the update. He also said that he hadn't really been paying attention to a lot of the short-term rental cases coming down from the Michigan Supreme Court, but he would start to pay closer attention to those being, and I again explained to him what the planning commission has been thinking and deliberating about when it comes to these and telling him that something will be coming down the pipeline very shortly. So that was all relayed and he will get back to us at a future date, so.
So when he gets back to you, were you, had you ever raised the issue with him about, this is not to do with short-term rentals, but as long as you're going to be talking to Zappa, because we previously had a meeting where we were talking about the blight issues on Bethany and Steve's road and the problem of piecemeal enforcement.
Right.
And so would you ask him if there's a.
That was also discussed.
That was also discussed.
Okay, what did he say?
Consent decree. If you'll remember, when we had issued tickets against the property owners in, I believe it was August, September, sometime in the fall of 2022, agreement was reached between the township and the property owners as far as what the township could do, as far as hiring a contractor to clean up the property, that the township reserves the right to do future enforcement. So Roger said that he was going to further review that document to see what, if anything, in there still holds true or still holds today at the present. Otherwise, a, a new consent decree, not to say that was a consent decree by definition, but a new consent decree that would be an avenue.
Well, when you, when you talk to him about this, ask him if we could put a liquidated damages clause in. So that's like, if you violate it, this is the damages, $25,000 or whatever in hell it is. I mean, I'm not suggesting that's the amount, but it should be an amount that would be punitive enough to make people want to comply.
Thank you. And then finally, item D is a work session is scheduled with Renovar Development LLC for Wednesday, May 8th, 2024. So they will be attending via Zoom, I believe, to comply with the planning commission's desire to speak with them ahead of their PUD Summitt.
What time will that be, Jason?
Same time as our meeting, 7:00 PM. Our next meeting is Wednesday, May 8th, so.
Well, we have a, we have a, I noticed that there was a publication in.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll, we'll get through the public hearing and then we'll jump into a work session, but it'll just be an agenda item.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Linda, Township Board Report.
So the Marquette Township Board met on April 17th. Items of interest were the school board superintendent came into a presentation. If you have time to review the meeting on video, it's quite interesting. Our school is doing lots of, the school system is doing Our school is doing lots of, school system is doing lots of things that should be of interest to parents. We also reappointed Glenn Johnson to the Iron Ore Heritage Board, and we did approve law enforcement renewal mileage for the ballot, as well as fire truck and apparatus replacement mileage for the ballot. Those were the things of interest. There was some discussion, Jason just left, but blight has been on a lot of people's minds, and Jason did list in his report the addresses of where the complaints were being sent. And so here you go, Eric.
That, that report that he gave, those addresses listed would have been properties that we have proceeded with enforcement on, so sending letters to, kind of that first step, so.
So, so can, maybe Eric, you're the person to ask, but people are asking me, what are the steps? So if you have that written down, then I am thinking that we would like to maybe know the steps, but certainly the residents who have the concerns, and maybe the property owners would like to know the steps, you know, like.
Yep.
What are those steps?
Yep, when I get a call from a citizen who has a complaint about, not to say that they need to complain about the immediate adjacent property, but often it is the next-door neighbor or across-the-street neighbor doing that complaint or submitting that complaint. I often explain this process to them, too. So there are people out there that know, but again, it's not, I guess, widely known. But the process would go, say, Linda, you called me to complain about a neighbor's property. I go out, put eyes on it. Usually, that's just a drive-by inspection. Put eyes on it, if it's substantiated in my view, I will send a letter out briefly describing what I saw, what needs to be corrected, provide a timeframe. That first timeframe is usually 30 days. After, on or after that 30-day mark, I would then go back out. And I would, I guess, backtracking, I guess, within that 30 days is, and I do state this in the letter, it is a hope of ours that that property owner reach out to us to, not to explain themselves, or give an alibi, or do anything like that, but to come up with a work plan of sorts, to say, I'm going to get this cleaned up next week, I'm going to get this cleaned up the week after. And when somebody does that, I'm more than willing to work with them. I'm not going to be strict and say, no, it needs to all be cleaned up by tomorrow. So after that first letter with, again, typically 30-day mark, nothing is done, I go back out, nothing is done to the property, I'll send another letter. Typically, that one's 14 to 21 days, two to three weeks. And then that, again, after that timeframe, nothing's done, I send a third letter. And again, that's typically a shorter timeframe, seven to 14. Then after that third letter is when I would proceed to a ticket.
So did we, as a planning commission, or who made those rules?
That's a good question.
Okay.
How I was, when I first started, that's how I was explained to by Jason and John, manager Kengus, kind of how it's always been done.
Yeah, so.
So obviously, that's not a.
Well.
There are certain, I can't speak to them directly or specifically, but there are certain regulations and laws at the state level as far as how, you can't just move right to a ticket, I don't think. Well, I guess you could, but you're not going to make progress that way.
So do you think the planning commission created that document, or the board, or the administration? And maybe this is way too much for today, but I can tell you, there is a lot of blight in Trowbridge Park. And it is, it is not what we want to be about. So maybe it's for another day. I, I, I know it's a big job, and maybe, maybe in the dream world, we'll get someone, but by the time we get through the 30, 30, 30, 30, we're to snow again. And that's not fair to you, if you're the person, but it's not fair to the neighbors. And, you know, the promising, I mean, Steve would be right here with me, the promising I'll clean up hasn't happened, so maybe another day.
Well, no, I mean, so that could be an issue addressed to Roger Zappa, whether or not that, that process could be shortened, it'd still be, give due process to the.
Right.
The landowner.
I don't think the process is written down.
Right.
I think the first problem is, we don't have a.
Oh, yeah, well, I mean.
Well, I think there's an enforcement written down somewhere, but, you know, it's not working, so I think that needs to be changed by us.
Is it us, the planning commission? Are we the us that changes it?
And I guess I would.
So I think we have a long way to go.
I wouldn't say it's not working, it's definitely not working efficiently.
Right, I guess I should clarify that.
Zappa though, to weigh in on that.
As quickly as it should.
So if we're the us, then Roger can come back and tell us we're the us, and someone can maybe produce a document. It's not fair to you to not even have a document, Eric. I mean, that's not right.
Well, he could make, Zappa could make a recommendation.
Well, he could.
And put it, put it in a memo, and then we could use that as our.
Yeah, and there might be one.
Following advice of council.
I've got it, I've got it written down to ask him about that. I know he's busy, but that's something that's pretty simple over an email about the process of property.
Yeah, and shorten it up.
Well, we're all busy, so.
Eric, did it go any further for us getting, I'll call him a blight officer, you know, hiring somebody that.
That'd be a question for Jason, I'm not sure. I assume it was, I don't know if it was discussed at that board meeting at all.
Didn't come to the board yet. So that, what that means is that, what that means is it's not gone, it's not gone, the, we could talk about stay in your own lane kind of thing, so the lane hasn't, they haven't gone down the lane yet.
I do understand that the assessing office has also expressed interest in utilizing that potential staff person for field visits when they go out to assess properties or update their assessments. Currently, Janelle Ruff, the in-office assessor, and Dulce Renta, who works mostly remotely, Janelle expressed interest in having somebody to kind of ride along, just as an extra pair of eyes and ears, and when she goes out to some of these places.
Yeah.
And I completely understand that, having done property maintenance work in Grand Rapids and such. So there's still some, I guess, discussions at the staff level as far as how many hours would go to the assessing department, how many hours would go to the planning department, planning and zoning, property maintenance, whatever. So again, I think it's probably still at the staff level, but Jason would have more details on that.
So two more things. It's really, really important, and if anybody watches this meeting, that you get house numbers on your house. Lovely that they're in the mailbox, mailboxes are covered with snow in the winter, usually. The other thing is Ontario to Wright Street, this summer, they're going to do the last third of that, so they're going to put a walking path only so far, as it currently is on Ontario, because there's some issues with drainage, and there, it's not going to be what, I was disappointed, I'll say that. I really want that bike path along that side, and not a painted line between a road and a road of people going 45, even though they're not.
Is this part of that culvert work that they're doing?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
This is the county, we have county roads in the township, and, you know, I know people don't understand that very well sometimes. We all seem to think they belong to the township, but they don't. We don't get to make the rules. But I was disappointed, and I will tell the road commission this, if I had that opportunity, that they're not going to do it like it currently is with the walking paths off of the road, to keep our walkers and small bikers, I would say, a little bit safer. But, so those were the last things, other than the North Iron Church is again going to be doing some volunteer activities in our township, and if anyone had any ideas, Lynn Duran would be the contact person.
What kind of activities?
They've done things like painted signs, they, they did some stuff, not planting flowers, but like a little repair. I did suggest a fence at Lyons Park to keep the three-year-olds off the road, but we'll see.
Sounds like a good idea.
Only people with three-year-olds probably want that.
That reminds me, when does the, like, sand sweeper come through, like, the corridor? Like, where Starbucks.
At your house?
No, Starbucks household, you know, like.
Oh, I don't know.
Our main corridor.
Yeah, we'd have to ask.
It comes once a year, you know, and you get it all piled up, and then.
That'd be probably M. Dot.
Yeah, oh, the M. Dot.
They usually have them scheduled out, but we had such an early spring, so I was just wondering if it was coming earlier, if it was just going to come in, like, June, July.
I don't know, they do the neighborhoods on a rotating schedule with the last person moves to the first person kind of townships, and you, they just, so sometimes you could be in July, sometimes in May, sometimes not at all, right?
We don't get that service at our houses.
You don't get that, right? That's what happens.
But I do like when the corridor is cleaned up.
Yeah, our township flowers out in the middle, we planted wildflowers out there two years ago, and, not the Parks and Rec Department, but kind of the Parks and Rec people have been cutting that lawn, so hopefully, the flowers are going to overtake the weeds, which is the way it's supposed to work. And then they talked about putting wildflowers under our solar panels, so you don't have to cut them.
No, I went up, I got it, I got this far from the surface of the solar panels today. I wanted to inspect them, they look great, they're really impressive. Walk over there, listen.
They do have a measurer, measuring how much the electricity it's generating, how much we're using, and how much we're selling back to the Board of Light and Power, the grid, yeah. You don't, yeah, you don't get a lot of money for that, but, but we are using them, so I think, I don't know, Eric, is that public knowledge? I mean, I think.
What's that, the solar panels?
How much we're using, I can find it.
Where are the batteries, anyway? Where do we keep the.
We don't, we don't have any batteries, is my understanding.
Yeah, I'm not.
No batteries.
Just go to the recitations.
Direct, and direct back, so batteries become, I think batteries become a problem for storage.
Yeah.
So I don't think we have any. Yeah, but the person that did all of it, the company, they were very helpful.
They were in here, Peninsula Solar, in here often when we were doing that ordinance update, right?
Yeah, yeah. So I'm done, and Jason's still out there, who's the arrogant one?
I guess I kind of had a comment, kind of a proactive comment before we got there. I, I remember last year with the issue of the Christmas decorations on the streets there blocking traffic, and I don't know if there's, I couldn't remember if there's anything that could be done about that with putting no parking signs on, you know, you had put cones out there before, and.
Oh, they took them down.
Down, and I don't know if there's any other, anything else we could do about that, but, because I've been through there, too, and, I mean, you can, you can't get more than one car through there a lot of times, and.
A fire truck won't go through there.
Right, right, so last I knew on that.
We lost.
Fire Department, in conjunction with the Public Works Department, put out those cones and the signs. Beyond that will likely involve road commission and the county sheriff.
They took them down, though.
They took them down, the road commission.
Road commission.
Okay. Well, then, that's, I think, the extent of what the township can do. So I would assume that we would then lean on the sheriff and the road commission to figure the issue out, again, not to say that's the.
Yeah, that's sad.
One thing you could do is stop no parking signs on one side of the street.
Yeah, they took them down, they were, they were like, I don't.
Neither probably wouldn't be happy with that.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know.
It's just something you might have to put up with for six weeks.
Yeah.
Something on books and rolls.
Yeah, that's another one, yeah, mhm. So that's it from the township board.
Any rec committee report, Eric?
Jason did whisper to me right before he stepped out to speak with them that rec committee did not meet. Road Committee meets the first week of May, so we have not met since the previous planning commission meeting. And then the planning and zoning report, short of anything that Jason has, I mean, we've been busy reviewing the RFPs that we talked about tonight, meeting administration, especially, I know Jason's been busy with the, getting that zoning board of appeals meeting set, and then myself, that property maintenance, those few addresses that Jason did report on, I did some canvassing yesterday of 550 and other parts of the township, and then business licenses are still trickling in, we are getting there with those, though. Other than that, if there's any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer, but really nothing further.
So I have one question, I called it the wish list, but we call them, what do we call those things where they ask for what they want next year?
Oh, the capital improvement.
Capital improvement, yeah. They call them something other than capital improvement, too, they have some name for them, but they're supposed to be in.
Okay.
So we should be seeing those soon, and I will remind them at the township board meeting again that the planning commission is waiting for them.
And I'll be just as confused about our role in reviewing and processing.
As ever.
As I have been for the last three years.
Yeah, well, I think maybe it'll get better, though, because we're talking, we've been talking about how you have to plan for the future, the master plan is a plan for the future, these things should be planned for the future. Before, maybe we started, we said the new fire truck, we ordered five years ago, is almost ready to be picked up. So we paid for a fire truck approximately five years ago, that now will be here.
Because of the construction?
Because it takes that long, and we lived through COVID, and, you know, all those things, but that's the oldest one, and now we have another one that is five years older, and we need, I think it's called the ladder truck, we need to probably look at replacing the ladder truck. So, you know, and then there's the ambulance, you know, all those things, but if we have a plan, just like when you need to replace your roof, although I'm sure they're wrong, okay. Anyways, yeah, Jason probably knows the name of those plans, not capital improvement.
Asset management.
No, when people ask for wonderful items, is that what they're called?
Capital improvement, yeah.
Oh, it does call capital improvement.
Infrastructure, parks, equipment, vehicles.
When they're supposed to bring them to us, and we're supposed to look at them.
Yeah, that should be, actually, we turned ours in soon, yeah, we turned ours in last month.
Yeah, so we should be getting them soon.
Yeah, these guys are starting the budget process a little bit earlier this year.
Are we?
At least with regard to C I P.
Okay, so what, what are you doing with that park where we might have a partnership instead of waiting for grant money? Might we really have a partnership?
Which one?
For the Trailhead.
Oh, that's in very infantile discussions right now with M T N about partnering to perhaps put in a parking lot to start, and some other minor amenities, but nothing, nothing to report on that right now.
Okay, so I would recommend that you put some money requested in for that from the township board in our budgeting process, because they sort of assured me that, that they've never turned down money for requests for recreation or something like that. Okay, so I thought we had money set aside to match grants, but they said, no, we didn't.
Well, if you talk to manager Kengus, I think there's somewhat of a balance left over from the excise tax from the marijuana.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Facilities in the community.
Do you have anything further to add in planning this one report?
Hmm, quite, there's lots going on. We entertained a phone chat with representatives from Better than the Fairies this week, which was really interesting and exciting.
For the new facility that was supposed to go on the land, the Dow Chemical thing, and then got pulled away.
Yes, sir. Yeah, they have a hundred million dollar budget. So we, they have some properties that they're interested in, and we gave them information and some opinions, and we'll move forward with offers.
And these are properties that are simply in the township but are privately owned, or are they owned by the township?
They're privately owned.
Privately owned.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they're looking for upwards of 25 to 40 acres. None at this time, probably at our next meeting, we'll have something more to report. Excited to get this master plan process off the ground and get us rolling in that direction. Excited to get this master plan process off the ground and get us rolling in that direction.
I guess I wanted to bring up something now instead of waiting till announcements or from planning commissioners.
I think that there's kind of getting to be an issue at 906 and Mount Manufacturing as far as junk being thrown around outside and.
Is that right? Okay.
Yeah, there's.
We could ask Eric to add that to his list and, yeah, we've.
They've kind of been taking advantage of the parking situation, but now it's like, are you throwing all this junk outside too? It's kind of like, all right.
Okay.
I guess you don't care about your neighbors.
Yeah, I, I will make a phone call to Mount Manufacturing's owner tomorrow and.
What do you think about that whole parking situation with that?
Well.
Are they allowed to let them use the parking lot? They're kind of in a pickle there because they don't.
Well, I will say that they have a special use permit to operate there. The special use permit does not reflect any additional parking from an adjacent business. I understand there's construction going on with the bank, it kind of threw things off as far as what they have there. The problem that 906 suffers from is that they're growing and they have different segments of their business, so so the engineering component of that business is what has the equipment and the trucks, and it seems as though they don't have enough property to house their buildings and we'll just have to address that through zoning compliance, so.
Would they be able to use Mount Manufacturing's parking somehow?
I would think that the special use permit would need to be altered for that to happen, and in my opinion, at this time, it's, it's, it's outside of the conditions that were provided.
I mean, I'm definitely not trying to make it hard for any businesses, but I'm just trying to find a way to, you know, solve it and have them clean it up, and even Mount Manufacturing around that dumpster, there's like a bunch of stuff thrown around there and they're not keeping it in the dumpster at all.
Okay, yeah, I haven't been by there in a, in a hot minute, so I'll, I'll drive by there tomorrow.
It's nice to get all the time.
Yeah, yeah, you live up that way, yeah, no, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
And then remember the guy that put that big farm in front of his house? He had.
The greenhouse?
Yeah, the greenhouse. He's got a lot of stuff there too, a lot of junk in his yard now.
Okay.
So, you might want to check that out as well.
I'll show you where it is.
I think he just took down all that hoop house and put it back there and along with more stuff, but. Okay.
Thank you.
Any announcements from anyone? Public comment? John, can you comment? Okay. Comments by planning commissioners. Okay, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
At 8:33.